Good morning. It is Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are no changes, I'll take a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Agenda is adopted. Now is the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment and you're in the public meeting room, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing no rush, we'll close public comment number one. We'll move on to consideration of a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as Women's History Month. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force and working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played unique roles throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of volunteer labor forces of the nation. And whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation.
And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement and have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as National Women's History Month. We take this as a time to celebrate the accomplishments and milestones of women all over the world. I move the proclamation.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. The proclamation is adopted. And do we want to do the picture right now, Bryce? Okay. And do you have the nice? Just this one? I kind of wrote on it. Thanks, everybody. We've learned to be a little picky with our chairs. Okay, moving on, we have agency reports. We have the Bridge Homes American Rescue Plan Act Annual Report. Good morning. And then just state your name. You'll want to make sure you have the mic on.
There we go. Good morning, Jody Stumbo, the Bridge Home.
And I'm Sherri Riley, also from the Bridge Home.
So I'm just gonna do a quick overview of how many people we've got in there and a bit about what's going on. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. And Sherri will have some updates to share as well. So we are happy that the eight-plex is full. And it was full when we opened the doors with the exception of one of the units that had to be completely gutted because the prior resident smoked in that unit. And the renovation and putting the paint and everything on it did not take care of that smell. So we did renovate that. And once that was done, then all eight units were occupied. They still continue to be occupied. We have not had any turnover of those units yet. And we have seen some really great things coming out of the eight-plex. Creating community has been one of the wonderful things that we've seen. What is nice, people having coffee, sitting outside on the steps with their neighbors. We know we have one of the tenants in there that kind of checks on everybody, makes sure things are going well with them, see if they need anything. So it's just been a great addition to the community and for those folks who do need the affordable housing. And we really appreciate the support that you guys have given us to make that happen.
Well, since our quarterly report that was filed in early January, on that report, we had reported seven units filled. We filled the eighth unit. And as Jody said, the the community building is one of the aspects, but there's also some increase in in wages earned by some of the members of that community. And then they're also building community now at the other building that we have next door. And so there's just a lot of camaraderie going on in that area. And so I think it's really increasing the stability of that neighborhood. And all eight of the tenants in that building were at some point chronically homeless. And so the idea that they can live and be safe and stable is just something that is a great benefit to them and to our community. The other thing you might notice is that we haven't filed another claim since January. And one of the reasons for that is because our our relationship with our property manager is evolving. We've added 26 units over six months into his stock of. And so we're we're working on how to account for things correctly, make sure all the rents go into the right accounts for the right buildings and things like that using our bill pay system. And so I'll be filing a claim pretty soon to catch us back up. There's no reason to expect that we won't be able to spend all the money. And also, I have held off doing a budget revision until we're sure exactly what we might need to revise that to. I didn't want to do a frivolous revision and then have to do another one. So that's where we're at.
Questions? I do have a couple. How long are the residents staying in the eight-plex? I mean, is this forever?
They have yearly leases, and so they can renew them and stay or decide to move on.
And are they getting some sort of wraparound services for others to, you know, I don't know if they're employed or underemployed or needing other support systems?
As Sherri mentioned, we have had some of them increase their wages. On the report, we have a list of the different referrals we've made to help provide wraparound services, food assistance, food pantry, primary health care, McFarland Clinic, Social Security. So the case managers are working very hard to make sure they are getting connected with the right resources in our community and then making sure that they're they're sticking with those resources.
And then Sherri, I have a question since you mentioned about the financial part and the budget revision. You would be just potentially looking at a revision within your line items?
Yes.
And there where it may need to be allocated more, one one line item versus another?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. If you're done.
Yes.
So what is the range of the rent that people pay when they're in the eight-plex?
So it depends on their income. They're asked to pay for for those who, the two households that are in our supportive housing program, they're asked to pay 30% of their income. And then the rest is supported by that program, as long as they fulfill the requirements of the program. And then for those who are in rapid rehousing, it varies depending on how long they've been in the rapid rehousing program, their income, and then their their plan that they have with their housing staff.
What is the monthly rent?
The monthly rent is, I believe it's $8.57 for the one the one unit that's, what do you call a studio? Yes, thank you. And then the one bedrooms, I believe, are $9.18 per month. It's the fair market rent that's allowable for for 2024.
And somebody, you said people are on yearly leases, so they could re-up and stay there for potentially forever?
Yes. It's a regular apartment in that way.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Next, I have consideration of minutes.
Move approval.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. A consent agenda.
And I would move approval of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. We have no public hearing items. Down to additional items, discussion and consideration of fax quote for faxing services for Story County.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
So what we have today, this has been kind of a process as as I've been evaluating different things that the county has and uses and looking at our different services and offerings. One of the things that has stood out is our faxing. So we have a little bit of a mix right now of electronic faxing and traditional faxing where it goes over a standard phone line. With that, the electronic faxing is significantly cheaper. With the telephone line-based faxing, you pay for a telephone line for each for each fax machine that you've got. As those companies are kind of looking at retiring that old copper infrastructure, the cost is going up. So right now, I think it's the Ames Copper Lines for faxing. We're paying 120 a month for each of those fax machines. The ones here in Nevada aren't quite as bad, but they're they're close. And then you pay on top of that, you pay your long distance fees and all of that for transmission of faxes. So it can be a pretty costly, pretty costly endeavor. So right now, we pay around 13,000 to 14,000 for faxing, whether it's electronic or traditional phone line faxing. So that was kind of one of the things that stood out to me right away is we're spending a lot of money and we have this service that's reliant on on older technology that some of those providers are kind of wanting to push us off of. So what I've got here today is a proposal to move all of our fax lines, which is 17 fax lines to an e-fax service. We looked at our average number of faxing that we send per month. It's it's around 2,000 pages. So this agreement covers 2,500 pages, so it gives us a little extra. If we go over that, we pay just a certain cost per page, but I'm pretty confident we shouldn't have that issue. We'd be looking at a monthly cost of around $200. So and that's all in. So the initial fee for setup and moving the telephone numbers and everything over is 543.46. And then the subsequent monthly fees are about 200 bucks.
Is that 200 total or 200 per line?
200 total. So we'd be looking at saving the county at least 10,000 a year by moving to this solution. Sent an email out to Department Haddon elected officials about a month ago, just asking for any feedback, letting them know kind of the why of this process. I receive a lot of, that sounds great, let's do it. Worked with the Sheriff's Department to ensure that it's compliant with HIPAA and CGS and everything. So we're good from that regard. To me, this is a pretty easy, easy cost savings for the county. Capability wise, we'll actually gain some capability right now with our current lines that are e-fax. Only a handful of people per department can send those. With this solution, we can have unlimited users. So really, anybody can send a fax from their computer. And how that works is you just create an email to a specific email address. You attach the document you want to fax. You hit send. It goes off into the cloud and then ends up at somebody's fax machine on the other end. For those who use traditional faxing where you want to walk up to the copier, scan your pages in, send it that way, that'll all still work the exact same way. So the process, depending on on what folks are comfortable with and what works for their workflow, will work with this new solution as well. So.
Any questions?
Any downsides to this?
Really? No. There's a lot of upside. You know, cost is a huge one. Right now, we're kind of at the mercy of if if the phone company has issues with some of these older lines, the fax service just stops. Well, with this being an electronic service, we've got multiple internet connections at the county. We've got a lot of redundancy built into our network. So we actually gain some some redundancy and flexibility there as far as when if things should go down. And then Eagle Fax, they they build in a lot of redundancy on their end to to ensure that that there aren't downsides. You know, with it with it being compliant with HIPAA and things, that's that's usually everybody's kind of number one complaint and especially with or concern, and especially with law enforcement and healthcare, you know, faxing is the way that we can send to those folks. And that's the only way that they'll recognize. So with this being compliant, being a fax service, then we're covered in that regard. So I'd done this at the school several years ago, a smooth process to switch over, worked really well, no complaints. So knock on wood, I don't see really a big downside on this one at all.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me, too.
I would move that we accept the fax quote for faxing services for Story County from Eagle Fax and direct the IT Director to move forward.
Second, moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thanks, Joe. Okay, next we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 25-71 Dayton Road, Dayton Ridge, Platte 2, a major subdivision preliminary plat. Good morning, Andrea.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. I believe Bryce has a PowerPoint to put up for the subdivision. But this is a major subdivision request just northeast of Ames, off of Dayton Avenue. Originally, this preliminary plat went to our Planning and Zoning Commission back in August of 2024. They conditionally approved the preliminary plat, and the developer and applicant has been working on completing those conditions and revising the plat and accompanying documents. And that's why it's taken so long to get to the Board of Supervisors. With major subdivisions, there's a preliminary plat approval that happens first. If it's approved, that approval is good for one year. And within that one year, the applicant would have to provide us the final plat to actually be approved and recorded and then create the subdivision. So the applicant is Bob Gibson with CDA, Civil Design Advantage. The property owners or developers are Jeff and Mary Gibbons, and then the Connie Underwood Revocable Trust. So this is in Franklin Township. It is split zoned. The parcels involved are split zoned between R1 Transitional and AR Agricultural Residential. The location, as I mentioned, is just northeast of Ames. You can see it there on the yellow star. So there are three subject properties involved. The largest of the three is the Underwood Parcel, currently known as Parcel J. It is being involved only because part of it is being split to create the street lot for the subdivision over what is now an easement that is Dayton Parkway. So Dayton Parkway would become a publicly dedicated privately maintained street lot. And then to the south, you have what is currently Lot 4 of Dayton Ridge Plat 1 and Lot 1 of Dayton Ridge Plat 1. Those two would also be involved. What is currently Lot 1 of the original Dayton Ridge subdivision would be split to create the street lot. And then what is currently Lot 4 of the Dayton Ridge subdivision would be split to create three additional developable lots as well as the street lot. So in total, in Dayton Ridge Plat 2, in total, there would be six lots. Only three of those would be newly developable lots. Two of those six are already built on and have houses on them. And one of them is already platted as a developable lot, if that makes sense. So this is, it's difficult to see. It's, you know, a very detailed plat. But this is what the plat looks like. You can see to the southwest, lots 2, 3, and 4 are the new the new developable lots at the end of Dayton Parkway. What is Lot 1 currently has one of the developers' homes on it. And then Lot 6 is what is currently known as Parcel J to the north. And again, that is already built on and would just become a part of the subdivision strictly because of the creation of the street lot. So the all of the applicable regulations were included in the staff report. They are quite lengthy for the major subdivision process. We, of course, reviewed the preliminary plat and all the documents that were submitted with it against those regulations in August, when this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were several issues with the preliminary plat. And so the commission conditionally approved the plat with, you know, eight conditions that needed to be satisfied before this could be brought forward to the Board of Supervisors today. We have looked at all the revised documents and all eight of the conditions that the commission put on the approval or the recommendation of approval, those have been satisfied. So I can go through a really quick summary of those eight on this slide. Essentially, Parcel J and Lot 1 of current Dayton Ridge subdivision were not shown on the plat. That has been or they weren't shown as part of the subdivision, rather. That has been corrected. Our regulations, our newer regulations for natural resource protection require that a geotechnical analysis be done and be submitted. That has been submitted to us. And if the final plat is approved in the future, that geotechnical analysis would be recorded with the final plat. So there was an issue with the width of the access easement over Lot 4 going to some property owners to the west who are not involved with the subdivision. That easement width has been revised. It is now 60 feet in width. There's 30 feet of that on what is Lot 4 of this new subdivision. And then a neighbor to the north who's not involved with the subdivision has also provided 30 feet for that access easement. So there's a total of 60 feet, which meets our standards. We did ask the applicant to change what they were calling building envelopes to development envelopes, because that's what we call them in the regulations. That way, we could actually enforce what happens in the development envelopes. The 911 addresses for the two lots that have houses on them were not shown on the plat. That has now been fixed. The Office of the State Archaeologist has reviewed the archaeological survey that was completed and deemed that no other surveys are necessary. So that is finished. The previous maintenance agreement for the street lot, it did not, it kept referring to it as a private road, which it is not. It is a publicly dedicated road privately maintained. So that maintenance agreement has been completely redone. Any references to a private road have been taken out. And then the maintenance agreement now clarifies which lot owners in the subdivision are responsible for paying into maintenance for that privately maintained road. So those were the eight conditions of approval put on by the commission. All of them have been satisfied. So there are critical natural resource areas mapped onto onto what is currently Lot 4 of Dayton Ridge Plat 1. County Conservation did do two site reviews on this property, and the developer, Jeff Gibbons, hired someone to come and look at the trees. They determined that this is not remnant prairie or oak savanna. And so those regulations and protections that we have for that type of natural resource do not apply. As far as tree removal, the new developable lots that are being created do not have a significant amount of trees on them. There is kind of an existing cul-de-sac at the end of Dayton Parkway that is gravel that will be paved. And so that's not not taking any trees out for the creation of the street lot. So in total, there's only about 0.66 acres that would actually be involved in the development envelopes for these for these new lots. So it doesn't meet our threshold of needing a mitigation plan for tree removal either. And then on the next slide, I talk about the alternative compliance request. We discourage the creation of what are known as flag lots in the ordinance. That's where you have kind of a, the buildable area of the lot sits well behind, you know, kind of this kind of skinny narrow area that you have for the driveway. Proposed Lot 4, if you look at the plat, it is a flag lot. It has kind of that flag pole that comes down for the driveway. And then to the south is the actual buildable area. We discourage them because they're not often a great type of land use. In this case, the applicant has submitted alternative compliance requests stating that this will disturb less treed area by not having the cul-de-sac extend any further to the west. It also better provides for an easement to the property to the west. So if you decide to approve the preliminary plat today, staff would also ask that you approve the alternative compliance request that the applicant submitted. So we do route these subdivisions for interagency review. The Story County Auditor's Office had several comments, but all of their, all the issues that they identified have been revised on the plat. The engineer has reviewed the street plan and has okayed it and is allowing, in the road right-of-way between Dayton Avenue and Dayton Parkway, they are allowing that to remain as gravel as opposed to being paved in order to maintain the grade at that area. So you don't have additional runoff coming onto Dayton Avenue. Story County Environmental Health provided some comments that due to topography, they might require alternative treatment systems for the septic on these developable lots. But they would, of course, look at that as permits came in to build on them. And then our only remaining comment planning and development is that an easement was recorded recently for over what is proposed Lot 4 of this subdivision. The Recorder's Office, they couldn't index it because the subdivision hasn't actually been created yet. So we are recommending a condition of approval on the preliminary plat that that document be rerecorded with the subdivision if it's approved, the final plat. And also that the legal description of the driveway easement refer to this this current Dayton Ridge Plat 2. Currently, it refers to Dayton Ridge Plat 1. But again, this easement is being redone because of this new subdivision. So we're asking that that legal description be updated, if that makes sense. I can go over that some more if you'd like. Public comments. On February 24th, we did mail out notice letters to surrounding property owners. I have only received one comment from one neighbor via phone call. They are concerned about, so Dayton Parkway is currently in easement. We have been unable to find a recorded easement document for that. It is referred to on subdivision plaits and on individuals' abstracts, but we as staff have not been able to find a recorded easement agreement. They are concerned and have questions about why the developers are allowed to essentially undo that easement by plating Dayton Parkway as a street lot. And so have tried to answer those questions, but they are concerned about about why that is being allowed, is essentially my understanding, and concerned about access to their property. And then City of Ames, in September of 2024, they did, the city council did provide a waiver of their infrastructure requirements because they also view this as a major subdivision plat. So they waived their review of the preliminary plat. They will have review authority over the final plat, and they will need to take action first before it comes to the Board. And they will need to take action first before it comes to the Board of Supervisors. Because if they deny, if they were to deny the final plat, then as you know, the Board of Supervisors could not then turn around and approve the subdivision. So they will need to take action first. So one recommended condition of approval that we have as staff is, as I mentioned, that the legal description for the driveway easement over proposed Lot 4 be changed to reference Dayton Ridge Plat 2 and that that driveway easement be rerecorded with the final plat if and when it is approved. So points to consider, you know, any additional divisions of these lots would again require another subdivision request to go before the commission and the Board of Supervisors. I already mentioned the condition of approval that we're recommending. And then, you know, we did check this over for adherence to Chapter 88.05, our critical natural resource protections, as well as our protections for significant slopes. And the developer and applicant have met all of those standards. And I believe the only slide left is alternatives. As staff, we're recommending alternative number two, that you approve Resolution 25-71 for the major subdivision preliminary plat of Dayton Ridge Plat 2 with the one condition as laid out in the staff report pertaining to that driveway easement. And then that you also approve the alternative compliance request. I'm happy to take questions. I know it's not a public hearing. That's not the way it's laid out in the ordinance, but I believe there are individuals who might want to make comment if you would like to open it up.
Thank you. Do you have a question or?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay. I am going to open it up to see if there are folks that would like to make comment. Bryce, yes. So if there's anyone in the room here or in line or online, excuse me, that would like to make comment, please go to the podium, state your name and address. And if you're online, please raise your hand and we'll call on you as we view them.
Liz Peel, 2020 Dayton Parkway and 2017 Dayton Parkway. In our abstract, we have, we've, we've lived at these resident, this property for 30 plus years. In our abstract, we have our easement agreement in our abstract. We also have the abs, we also have in our abstract, the maintenance agreement on this easement of this road. So I'm not, I'm kind of clueless as to why nobody can find this, is it ever being recorded anywhere?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I can't really answer that question. We just, we've been unable to find a recorded version of the easement.
So do you need to look at my abstract to find it recorded? Because I've been to the office and they've printed it out for me.
Are you referring to the Recorder's Office?
Yeah. So do you need a copy of that from me so you can see it?
Anyone can provide a copy of their abstract if they'd like.
Okay. So on that abstract, I can give you my agreement to the easement and my maintenance agreement to the easement of that road. Yes?
Yes.
So we already have that. We've had it for 30 years. And we are, don't know anything about the new easement coming out. And I don't believe any of my neighbors have signed an easement. They have signed an easement. One neighbor did sign an easement, but the maintenance of the road has not been signed. And I'm not sure exactly what all that entails because it's been changed a few times.
Could I ask exactly what your concern is?
My concern is the easement on the road and the maintenance of that road, which you said it was satisfied in number eight of the conditions. And my also concern is that it's all of a sudden made into a public road, but we have to privately maintain it. I don't know what the maintenance costs are going to be on that road. I'm on a, I'm on a fixed budget. I don't like the fact that all of a sudden I've got, I've been, we've been maintaining the road for 30 years. We have our own equipment, so it isn't a per se yearly cost. And that's, that's one thing we're concerned about. We have a lot of concerns, which we've already addressed this place about three times. So I feel it just is redundant at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has, yes. Again, please state your name and your address.
Bob Gibson, Willstal Design Advantage, 4121 Northwest Hunter Street in Urbendale. And I would, first of all, just to say we concur with the staff's recommendation for approval as in the staff report. But I'd like to address the easement and the road situation. The new easement that was created, which is just west of the cul-de-sac bulb.
Could, could you pull the mic just a little bit closer to, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you.
There we go. And can you put the, the plat drawing up? There you go. But just, well, I guess it's southwest of the cul-de-sac bulb. There's, that's where the new easement, the new recorded easements are. Now, for 30 years, there has been an acknowledged easement all the way out to Dayton Avenue. But county could not find a recorded easement. We've seen some drawings and exhibits, but nothing actually recorded. So staff asked us that we would just kind of clean that up by getting that recorded. But as part of this subdivision, we are required to create that street to provide access and make it a public street. Well, that street is basically the same easement. It just, it's the converting the easement area, which is over the Underwoods property and Jeff's property. The Osbornes, which are just southwest of the Under, Underwoods there, opted not to do that. So that's why the cul-de-sac bends a little bit to keep the eas, their property out of the plat entirely. But that easement still exists and was, they signed that to get their portion of the easement just officially recorded and cleaned up. And then the easement that Andrea's been referring to, that needs new language, once the new plat is recorded, is on the southeast side of Jeff's property in that lot, Lot 4, which is the flag lot. So the easement, the g, the geometry of the easement does not change. Part of it is converted to public street. As far as the maintenance, the maintenance agreement that Jeff has put together has put the, the maintenance responsibility on the new lots. And so the Peel property is not a part of that at all. So they are, they have now been kind of relieved of maintenance of any of that, right? Give or take or? That's my understanding. But the pavement and it's going to get paved. And it, right now, it's just gravel. So that pavement of that 800 feet is a vast improvement. And frankly, some of the flag and easement in Lot 4 is going to get paved as well. So there'll be less maintenance involved with, you know, repairing the rock and keeping that all graded. So that's, that's the story of the easement and the road itself. Jeff, do you want to address that maintenance agreement or?
There, there will.
Could you please state your name?
Jeff Gibbons, 2305 Dayton Ridge Road, property owner. There is a new maintenance agreement that Lot 4, 3, and 2 of plat and, and Lot 5 will be a part of. The Peels were invited to be a part of this maintenance agreement. They opted out. Lot 4, 3, and 2 have to be a part of it. If, when those lots are sold, there's a maintenance agreement. So technically, they're, those, those new lots are going to maintain that road. So.
Okay.
The other residents opted not to be a part of it. That's all I can say.
So you're saying, I, I heard Mr. Gibson say, the geometry of the easement doesn't change. So there'll be a road, just like there's a road now?
Basically, the pavement goes over the existing Dayton Parkway.
Okay. And the maintenance responsibility, none of that will fall to the Peels?
Correct. Well, that's the, 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 the the public road goes to the round, the round, the cul-de-sac. Beyond the cul-de-sac is a driveway. The other is a public street. Beyond the cul, from, from the cul-de-sac back to your place is, is a driveway.
That you would, right, that you would maintain. Right, right, right. But the rest of the road, you would not have to maintain?
Lot 4, Lot 4 is going to have a driveway to the cul-de-sac. That's going to be paved. That's to the west of the cul-de-sac, so, you know.
And please don't touch the screen. Just be mindful of that.
As part of their driveway, is that correct?
It's, it's a driveway. It's not a public street. From, from the cul-de-sac west to your property is a driveway. And so there's a maintenance, there's a maintenance agreement for Lot 4 up to the cul-de-sac. And then there's a maintenance agreement from the cul-de-sac to Dayton Road. There's, because it's a, it's a public, it's a public road to the cul-de-sac. Yes, that's going to be paved. That's the flag lot. No, they're not going to be, they're, they're going to be driving on pavement. You'll be driving on pavement from, from their access in the flag lot.
Andrea, do I?
I, I've invited the Peels. Ron?
Could I cut in here, please?
Yes, yes.
So staff, when we review the subdivision, we make sure that property owners have legal access to their property. So there is now a publicly dedicated street lot that has been proposed. And there is an easement that meets our standards and goes over an existing driveway to private property. So that is what staff has checked on the subdivision to make sure that everybody has legal access to their property. The fine details of whose driveway is paved and whose driveway is gravel is not something that, that staff gets into. We check for legal access, which the subdivision has.
That's helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Did anyone online have any questions? Okay. Supervisor Merkin, do you have any questions?
I have no other questions. I would make a motion to approve the legal description of the access easement. I, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Bryce, could you put the alternatives back on the screen? I think that might.
I've got.
You got it?
Yeah. Yeah, I was on the wrong page. I'm sorry. I would move that we approve Resolution 25.71 for the major subdivision preliminary plat Dayton Ridge Plat 2 with one condition as presented in the staff report and also approve the ultimate compliance request in the report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Edens? Aye. Motion is approved. Next, we have discussion and consideration of full-time administrative assistant position for the General Assistance and Veterans Affairs to start in FY '25. Thank you all for coming in today.
Erin Rehorts, General Assistance. So yes, we're here today, first of all, to say thank you for the position itself for next fiscal year. We are very grateful for that. We have a couple things that are happening all at the same time prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, however. We have, the current intern that we have will be graduating from Iowa State. And that happens mid-May. And then I also have a staff member that is going on medical leave for 12 weeks at that same time. Exact same time, actually. So we, so yes, this is a request to see if we, if I could post and hire for the full-time administrative assistant prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Questions?
I have no questions.
I don't either. There a motion?
I'm of approval of the request.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Edens? Aye. It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have discussion and consideration of the Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Application for Center for Creative Justice requesting Story County as a local government agency sponsor. Good morning. I think it's still morning. Yep.
Morning.
Good morning, boards. So this morning, I'm Stacy Sugar, the Executive Director of the Center for Creative Justice. And this morning, I am here requesting consideration of Story County as a formal sponsor for a grant application to the Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Application. I am proposing a grant application to assist with a resource navigator position that would be funded if, if approved through the grant. The resource navigator position is important to the Story County Jail and individuals in Story County based on, you know, concerns with individuals that do not have a lot of support, individuals in our society that are getting released back into the community that, that may have substance use disorder issues, may have mental health concerns, and just a variety of quality of life issues. So this proposal is requesting that Story County sponsor the Center for Creative Justice as the person to carry out the work. This would entail support from the Center for Creative Justice with the, the hiring of the position and administrative support. So there would be no additional request of the county other than to be our formal sponsor. As part of the position, then, an individual would work with county jail staff to be able to help an individual plan for their release as they are coming back into the community. to be able to help an individual plan for their release as they are coming back into the community. We've identified that with changes to the, changes to the region, that there may be a gap in services. In looking at the request, or the response to the request for a proposal from Iowa Primary Care Association, they have also addressed that there are some justice-involved services gaps, specifically for District 5, of which Story County is a part of. And in addressing that and on their question and answers on the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services website, they do not give a, a strong indication of how this type of support for individuals that are getting released back into the community will be supported. In looking at and reviewing this grant application and the proposal that we are requesting, I have worked with Mr. John Shaw. He is online at this time. I had previously worked with Mr. Shaw through the Early Treatment Partnership about a year ago, and myself and other agencies within Story County, within the community providers, worked together to develop a road safety website and a website that addresses early identification of substance use disorders. And so the proposal includes an element of continuing to work with Mr. Shaw, who's now employed by North Carolina State University, in two aspects of this, with CCJ being responsible for the direct support of the individuals, and Mr. Shaw would be working with his university to develop, to develop a curriculum that would go on the tablets that are currently in use in the jail, and also for translating the current website as it exists. In addition, we reached out to the Story County Sheriff's Office regarding their interest in this position being available, and in speaking with Mr. Anderson and him taking it to command staff at the sheriff's office. We've, we've had a discussion about the importance of having continued support for inmates as they're released to, from the jail.
Questions?
Yeah, I, I have questions. How many people do, do you think you'll serve in a year?
Based on some of the, some of the information that, you know, that's available in the county snapshot, or county data snapshot, I would anticipate serving several hundred people.
Several hundred?
Yeah.
Who would you not serve?
So one of the, one of the challenges, I think, to this position would be assisting people that get released as soon as they're brought in. So I would like to work with, you know, the, the person that's selected for that position and the jail to identify ways that individuals who are maybe bond out at the time of their arrest, or are released on their own recognizance the next morning or over the weekend can be identified, because that is a concern.
And would you be using this as a pre-trial release program?
No. Since there is already an existing service that supports individuals in that realm, this would be a position to look at post-release support instead of diversion.
Okay, so sentenced people?
Not necessarily sentenced people. So we're terming it as post-release support so that we can have early identification, because even if somebody's arrested for, let's just say, a public intoxication, they, it may not be a condition of their release to be put on probation, but we feel that they could use support.
Would you be looking at getting people early released who are, let's say, somebody's sentenced for a year? Would you be, be looking at going back to the court and say, this is a good person to be released? We'd like you to suspend the remainder of their sentence? Is that how you'd get people out?
Again, it's not-
Waiting till they're discharging?
Right. We're waiting till discharged. It's not in the plan to look at an early release, per se, but rather, there are a lot of things that could be happening in the, while they're sitting in jail, both with the use of the tablet design and with a staff member to intervene and work with providers in the community. You know, for example, we have letters of support from multiple community providers that would be interested in partnering with us on making sure that those supports are in place when that person leaves the facility.
So, so if they don't, if, so you're waiting until they're discharging their sentence? So in effect, their work with you is going to be voluntary?
Correct.
Okay, that was where I was confused. It's not like a re-entry program?
No.
So do you think, if it's voluntary, given the people that you'd be dealing with, you might have a low uptake?
You know, honestly, in working with, you know, the individuals that we've worked with through the Center of Creative Justice for, you know, the past 50 years, we have individuals with their probation sentences that seek us out, even when they're not required to be there voluntarily, because they feel that that's where they can get support. Or we have individuals that follow us, follow up with us after they're released from probation, because they know how much support we provide to them. So I do think that there will be people that will take advantage of this program, even if it's not court ordered.
No offense, but your, the materials you sent us were pretty vague on terms of how you'd measure outcomes.
Yes. That is still in the planning phases. In the meantime, I have done some additional research and have identified that we will track the number of people admitted to services, the number of people that engage in services, and then a breakdown for individuals that have gained employment, that have followed through on obtaining a substance abuse evaluation, substance use treatment, mental health, mental health treatment, mental health evaluation, mental health treatment, and any of the other, you know, housing and wraparound supports that we can refer individuals to.
So in no way is this a diversion program?
No.
Are there still parts of the old jail diversion program that are still being done in the jail? I know it used to be a getting people out early program, and it ended up kind of being a jail services program. Are you still providing any of those services?
So the jail, excuse me, Micah Anderson, Assistant Jail Administrator. Most of those old programs that you refer to are no longer in place today. We do have Shelby Gibson's program that she's running.
Referring to alternatives?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But most of the programs that you're referring to have gone by the wayside. We, at the jail, often see people that we know don't have support in the community once they're released. And our concern is that we're putting them back into a situation that they're not going to do well in. Services such as what's being proposed today, I think, are important to help people get aligned with services, be that shelter, medication, employment, financial support, once they are released, because that, we often see people come right back to jail if they don't have that support in place.
Thank you. But we don't have a pre and post group to say before this program existed, the recidivism rate of these people was 80%. Now, two years later, after the program, it's 60. You're not able to do that kind of fine-
No, unfortunately not.
Okay. Got a few more questions, if you don't mind?
Nope.
Okay. You've got part of your salary and part of another CCJ staff's salary listed in the budget. Are you saying you're, you're going to charge part of your time back to the Byrne grant?
That is correct.
Are you sure you can do that? Because 100% of your salary is currently paid elsewhere. You need to maybe check with them and see if that's the planting?
Yes, I will double-check on that.
Okay, and I, I, I may have an old stricter version of the terms of planting, but when I looked at that, I thought that would have, the time I was doing Byrne grants, that would have been considered supplanting.
I appreciate that, because, yes, that-
And you have nothing in your budget for fiscal years two and three? Or did you just not have it completed when you said that?
The grant would require re-applying each year.
Okay. It's not a four-year grant, anything?
Not guaranteed. It's guaranteed for the fiscal year.
And what's the match requirement?
There is not one.
There's not a match?
For this grant, there is not.
Okay. There's something at the bottom. It says 10% of MD, MTDC. Facilities administrative costs, 10% of MTDC. I don't know what that abbreviation means. It's at the bottom of your budget?
Yes. So that, and John, I know you're online. I see that John has his-
That is intended. Bryce, could you connect John, please?
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, hi. Modified total direct cost. So that, Sherry's inherited a spreadsheet from our university as we were working on the budget, and that refers to modified total direct costs. In the university world, modified total direct cost means we don't charge overhead on salaries for tuition for graduate students. So effectively, we've got a 10% overhead on Sherry's agency's work.
Stacy.
Stacy.
Stacy, I'm sorry, Stacy. My God. Thank you.
Hey, I have one question. It refers to, you say sponsor all the time, so, you know, I think of sponsor of like us giving money-
Right.
Program.
Right.
So can you kind of help me with-
Yes. So actually, let me pull out the actual grant terminology. So in the grant eligible applicants, it says that Iowa faith-based and nonprofit organizations are eligible to receive grant funding, but application must be made through a state or local unit of government. So I don't know if sponsor then is necessarily the right word, but maybe an agreement or-
Okay, okay.
Because I am not requesting funding.
Yeah, but I think that's why with Linda asking for the match and me thinking sponsor is what- So you're looking then at the county being the fiscal agent?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
And also submitting the grant, being the grantee. With what you wrote, read, I think you're talking about more than just fiscal agent.
John, did you get clarification from Dennis on if I was allowed to submit the grant or if Story County needed to?
My understanding is CCJ can submit the grant. Their process is, these grant applications at this stage are kind of preliminary. Then they'll do interviews, and then ultimately, that'll lead to a formal, a formal agreement.
So how many of the people do you see just accessing or having access to the curriculum on the tablets as opposed to actually dealing with a real-life human being? Navigator, I assume that means?
The current tablet situation is every inmate is issued a tablet. So any programming materials that she would provide or they would provide would be available to essentially every inmate in custody. As far as the face-to-face, our current or previous systems have been that they can put in a request to jail staff that would then be forwarded to that office, and then they would meet as need be. I don't think anyone's ever been turned away other than for behavioral issues that they, they were just out of safe to go visit an individual in the jail.
Okay, and I'm specifically thinking about the navigator position that's on this. Would that person initiate contact or only contact if inmate wanted to?
So I anticipate that individual initiating contact and reviewing the program to see if individuals are interested. And at that point, I feel like the tablet could be used to supplement things that, that maybe they want to learn about their disorder or about their, you know, incarceration reasons while they're in jail, but not replace the navigator, who will be doing a lot of collaboration with partners in the community to ensure that if that person wants support when they're released, that those things are identified and lined up in preparation for their release.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Let me see if I have other questions. I'm going to ask the auditor's office if they would have any concerns about being fiscal agent for this grant.
Micah had reached out early last week and asked, asked about this, and we've never, we've never done this with CCJ, so I wanted to make sure that they understood that the documents needed, the, the information they needed, the timelines would be met. I'm sure they've worked with other agencies and had to do that. So I'd give it a try. I mean, we wouldn't be opposed to it.
Thank you. I think I do have another question, and I'm trying to find it. $72,000 for materials seems like a lot to me. Are this is, that's one question. Then I have another one about other agencies. And I'm wondering, are there already materials like this on the tablets?
I think you're referring to our subcontract, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
Yes, okay. So what we've, what we're, what we did previously under the GTSB grant was to develop the webpage and the early treatment outreach materials. In this project, we really have kind of three subtasks. One will be to adapt those materials that were already developed for the use, for use in the jail environment. A more technical task on getting those materials suitable for display, particularly the web materials suitable for display on the tablet PCs in the jail. Our next task is to really work on English, sorry, English to Spanish translations. So we'll work on adapting the website and the tablet PCs so that they can support multiple languages. And then we'll do a professional translation of the materials into Spanish with the potential to do additional languages in the future.
Are you basing any of these materials on materials that are already out there, like in SAMSA? Or, you know, because there's, there's a lot of materials out there for dealing with substance abuse. Are you, you know, that's where I've kind of stuck with 72,000. There's so many materials already out there.
Yeah, we, we did develop material previously, and we're adapting from SAMSA and many other sources. We're trying to bring everything together in one spot.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Stacy, the other question is I have for you is, Story County has a lot of resources right now. We've got Arch. We do have the region. I know it's undergoing some changes. We've got Crisis Intervention, Crisis Response Services. Is this gonna, is this going to take the place of, or how is it going to work with those services and not duplicate services? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, so one of the things that I think makes this position unique from the other supports and services that are available is the interaction that will take place for those individuals that are still incarcerated. Because, you know, there are a lot of individuals that sit for long periods of time in jail waiting for their release. And during that time, in addition to utilizing the curriculum that will be available, having an individual there in person to support them, that is able to work with them, any other natural supports in the community. I think there's a lot of planning that can be done while, you know, while that person is sitting in a holding pattern and waiting. So it's not intended to be a crisis response. It's not intended to, you know, take time off the sentence. It's not intended to, to replace any of those or duplicate any of those services, but rather be its own unique approach to supporting people as they're released.
And here's, here's my one concern, really, one bottom line about this. Is it's easy to not use when you're sitting in jail?
Yes.
No, as, as a corrections researcher ones, and, and also you don't change much when you're sitting in jail, even if you get them, get materials, get information. It's when somebody hits the streets again, they have, they're back with the same old folks. They're back, you know, with the same, you know this, I don't-
Yes.
So that's my concern, is that they get out and there's, you know, there's nothing keeping them working with you other than the relationship that your staff person has built while they're in jail. And you're putting a lot on that relationship.
Yeah. I agree with, with those concerns. The other element too of this is we are hoping to identify people that are maybe early in their criminal justice involvement to hopefully prevent maybe future criminal activity by having someone assist them and support them in the community before it would get, you know, further involved.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that.
I am, I am done. Okay, I just have two questions. So just based on, kind of on that conversation. So some folks that may be coming out of the jail. Is, is there some sort of linkage or whatever that you can provide to get them into treatment? If that's their need so that they're getting support in the jail, they can get into treatment and continue on, or is that not necessarily part of that process?
That would be part of that process, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, and, and in working with, you know, we've already spoke with CFR and YSS who have provided letters of support. So I anticipate that we could develop a very good relationship there.
Okay, and then I know this is a one-year grant. I guess my question is, is it, is it like a four-year grant, but you reapply like one year? Or is it just a one-year grant? You know, you know what I'm saying is like, you've got four years, but you have to re-
Yes.
You can do a minute, smaller reapplication to-
Correct.
Re-up.
Correct, because then in the application, there are different expectations if you're reapplying in future years.
Okay.
Or up to four years.
Okay, okay, okay. That's how I thought I read that, but I wasn't sure, so, okay. I don't have any other questions. I think you did quite well with all your questions, Supervisor Merkin.
I've been around this stuff.
I know, that's why I let you take the lead.
Yes, I, I would move approval of the Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Application for CCJ, requesting Story County as a local government agency sponsor.
Second, been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, thank you both. Moving on, yes, you're welcome. We'll have facilities management quarterly report.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning. Joby.
Hand you something real quick.
Thank you.
What I handed you both there is the first page of my quarterly report. If you look at the attachment on the agenda, the work order numbers for this last quarter are blank. I noticed that before I come up, so I printed off the actual one, so you could see them. All right, I'll just kind of go through. Now, as you see, I kind of highlighted some of the stuff we've done this last quarter. I also wanted to report that the footings for the Range House project got poured last week. So they're going to start potentially building some walls. They've also been working on doing some underground plumbing out there, so that one is moving forward now, so. Hopefully by spring. It should go fast now that the, the concrete work is done. The county attorney remodel is, I'm guessing probably in about a month, it'll be completely wrapped up. They got the attorney's office area mostly done. There's some fit and finish things. Some glass trim and that, but they are, all the attorneys are back in there in their new offices, so. It's looking pretty nice, so it's coming along. They're up in the old law library area right now, building walls for the new deposition rooms that are going up there, so. Moving right along. It's, it's going well, so.
When is the completion date?
About a month from now.
Okay.
So it's shuffled around.
You'll have to have a tour when it's done.
Yes, mhm, because it looks a lot different in there right now.
I'm sure, yeah.
I've even gotten lost a couple of times. Then Admin Generator, this project, it's kind of been sitting still for pretty much most of the winter. So we've kind of got date picked out in April to make that transition over. So then we, that'll be a nice one to have done. We'll have this entire building, we'll have generator backup and the engineers complex will have generator back, so. Both good things in case of, you know, utility loss. Other kind of larger things we've been doing. We've got a handful of things we've been working on out at the animal shelter. You know, that was an existing building when we purchased it. You know, we did do a kind of a major overhaul in 2018, but we weren't able to do everything in there. So we've just been kind of, last few years, picking away at, bringing it up to, it was built in more of a residential kind of design. We're just making it more of a commercial, more rugged. So replacing hollow core wood doors with steel doors, you know, in the cat rooms and dog rooms. And add another cat room. It's more of a, kind of like a playroom, display area. So they can have multiple cats, see them kind of not in a cage, so. The walls are mostly up on that right now, so it's coming along well. And then, yeah, some new ceiling tile, because there was some areas in there that we didn't touch. Still got the original ceiling tile and diffusers for the HVAC system are a little bit rusty, so. Going through replacing those. At the Justice Center, we replaced the squad room door, which on the surface doesn't seem like too much. But we went with a different type of door and frame. It's a fiberglass door and frame. It's the squad room door and like the dispatch door over there, ones that they get a lot of traffic. And we, we salt that sidewalk quite a bit because there's a lot of foot traffic in and out of that building because it's open 24/7. So the original door frame and door itself was getting pretty rusty. And we had tried these fiberglass doors a few years ago. We replaced some of the custodial closets in the jail with these fiberglass doors with really good results. So we tried it on the exterior. They're just as secure as a steel door, but don't have trouble with rusting, so. It turned out really nice. We just got to wait for it to warm up so we can paint it. Other than that, that's kind of the high points. Got any questions for me?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks. Moving on, no other reports? Any upcoming agenda items? Nope. I will have one that will be on next week. The attorney will put, actually, I won't, but the attorney's office will be putting on the agenda to utilize the Boost Office that's over at the HDS Building for the other alternatives staff person, suggestions and FYI. Now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, I see our auditor coming on up.
I'm just, if you live in the city of Nevada, there is a special election today. Polls are open until 8:00 PM tonight and you go vote at your assigned polling location. There are four in the city of Nevada. If you have any questions, please call the auditor's office, 515-382-7210. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no other public comment, no closed public comment. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements, Supervisor Merkin?
No, just a second. My calendar is giving me trouble. Don't think I have anything else today. Tomorrow, we have canceled the sexual harassment training that was going to be, and I think the sheriff has also canceled the training session, so I don't think we'll have. It might be a slow day given the weather tomorrow. Thursday, we have a meeting on the strategic plan that supervisors do in the morning and a meet and greet with some new Alliance staff. Friday, don't seem to have anything on my agenda. Looks like it's going to be a slower week. And Monday, I have Conservation Board.
I have nothing else today. Excuse me, tomorrow I have a workforce leadership meeting. I probably will not be able to make the strategic plan meeting or the Alliance meet and greet. And I know there is a tour with the Story County Medical on Friday.
Yeah, I missed that. That's, that's still on for 1:00.
Yes, yes. I, please give my regrets for that. I will-
Will do.
Be doing some work away from the building here as I continue to help my mother. With that, is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5 para 1 to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation? And the individual requests a closed session.
Move to go into closed session as described.
Second, Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. We're going into closed session. Outback, we are now back in open session? Are there any motions?
I move that we approve the annual performance review of the, review of the Director of Internal Operations and Human Resources as discussed in closed session.
Second, been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Motion is approved. There a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. We are adjourned.